So the first thing that's up is, so I had called our city manager and asked her to put on the ethics ordinance to review it because my understanding is that it was to be followed up today. So this is just a discussion, I think it was also, and someone correct me if I'm wrong, it was also supposed to be a follow-up to if there was any additions or deletions, deletions? Yeah. Any deletions that they wanted from the ethics ordinance. And so from what I saw, it was only one person, but of course, responded, and that was Bruce, who needs to get something else to do. So, open it up to the floor.
All right, well, I guess I'll make the.
I didn't bring my notes with me because I didn't know we were doing this.
Okay, go ahead, Bruce.
Yeah, I can make the comments that I was gonna make last week. Starting on section 4.3 E for appearance of impropriety. I guess this is a question for Scott, but it says, "The action of the city body which will affect an immediate family member." Shouldn't it be expanded past immediate family member? I mean, because wouldn't appearance of the property, couldn't that be to a friend or to yourself? Or is that covered elsewhere?
Well, I mean, I think it's, again, it's an area that needs to be, there's gotta be an endpoint somewhere, right? Because it's small community, you might know somebody, you might be friends with them. I mean, where do you draw the line at for, obviously, immediate family members? But, I mean.
Yeah, because I guess somewhere else it does, in other areas, it talks about friend.
I know, sure.
Well, again, remember, the threshold is financial.
Right.
I mean, so disclosing that, yes, I may be friends or maybe acquaintances with this individual is one thing, but does it rise to that level that requires, you know, some action on it? I think that's kind of the question, and I think in this section, I think immediate family, I mean, again, I'll leave it up to the council, but I think immediate family is probably where you draw the line. I mean, again, I'll leave it to you guys.
That's fine. I was just wondering what the impetus was for just leaving it at immediate family, which is fine, it makes sense. I don't know if anybody else has any comment. And then, same section H for respect for process. I'm assuming that this is where we're referencing the procedural document, the council procedures and, council procedures document, but I think we should call out the name of that document specifically here.
Okay.
So that there's no confusion. Ultra minor, 4.5 C, end of the first sentence is missing a paragraph, or missing a period.
I corrected that.
Oh, you did? Okay.
Recording in progress.
The, let's see. Section 4.5 F. So, most of the sanctions are, you know, formal central laws of committee assignment, restriction, on budget, travel, that kind of stuff seem to be, you know, pretty hand-slappish and not much of a deterrent. Now, obviously, you know, we can't do anything beyond what the charter says, and the charter indicates that, you know, there's gotta be a convicted felony for removal, but if we added something like a suspension in there, would that conflict with the charter?
It wouldn't conflict with the charter, but again, I mean, we talked, we touched on this a little bit last week. You know, my concern, I don't want this document to be utilized to, I want it to not be utilized.
It should never be utilized.
It should never be utilized, and by putting more punitive measures in there, it should be enough in and of itself that this document exists, that people know what the expectations are and how to conform to those expectations. We can add escalating discipline, I guess, for lack of a better term, but my concern is that I don't want this to necessarily just become, you know, a weaponized type of ordinance.
It shouldn't be. This should apply to everybody equally. Okay. And then, I know we talked a lot about section E, about the three-member board. To me, it seems like three members is small. It seems to me like a five-member board would be more appropriate, like all of our other boards, or five or more. It just seems like with three people, it's too much power being decided among too small of a group. It's my feeling. I don't know how others feel about that.
I don't have anything to say.
I actually have a suggestion, if I can speak up. I think that it would be something that would be advisable, that each member of council would have a suggestion of who they would like to see on the ethics board, somebody they would recommend, or that they would approve. You as a body would do that. I know primarily, your appointments come through the mayor, but this is an ethics board, so it's something that everybody would feel that they would have an equal voice or representation on the ethics board, and that's just a suggestion that I would make.
Well, I think that makes sense to have, you know, you have a five-member board, and that way each council member at least gets to suggest one person to that board.
Well, we were doing it anyway. It was just a recommendation.
Right.
And then the council can vote it up or vote it down, so why would we change? I mean, I know how everyone feels about me being the mayor and making those type of decisions, but remember that I will be gone at some point, and that the way that we normally handle business is, the mayor's the one that makes the appointment. The city council has the opportunity to vote it up or vote it down, but I also think that that's what we can discuss in study sessions leading up to it. Here are the people that we have decided on, and then the mayor at that time can say, "Here's who I think," and you can vote it up or vote it down. That's what my thoughts are. Don't just focus on me being in the position.
No, no, I'm just saying, as the mayor, as that position, that's primarily that function of the mayor's office is to, well, not the only function, but it is a function of the mayor's office to appoint committee members. So, for something of the ethics board, I just thought it would be, I don't know the right word to use for it, it would be something that everybody would feel they have an equal representation on it. That's the only point that I'm trying to make on that.
Personally, I don't have a preference either way. I just think it needs to be expanded beyond three to five. That's my big point there.
And you agree with the five, going to five.
Yeah, I'd be happy either way, you know, whatever the council decided on the other issue.
I have a question. I don't mean to interrupt you, but isn't this, aren't we supposed to post what we're talking about on an agenda for meetings?
Yeah, this is just a discussion. Do you have, I mean, it was just a discussion that I thought that we need to follow up on.
I know it's a discussion, but it's not posted.
To answer your question, yes.
It isn't posted.
No, it's not, but it was just a discussion. So, yes, to answer your question, you are correct. Yes, it should have been posted ahead of time, from what my understanding was from our last meeting, is that it was supposed to be discussed today.
You weren't at our last meeting.
And it wasn't it? I'm sorry.
You weren't at our last meeting. We didn't say we were gonna discuss it today.
I never said that I was at your last meeting. I was saying, from my understanding, from the last meeting, you were supposed to discuss it tonight, and so all you're doing is doing a discussion. And so that is the feedback that I got from numerous people off of the council from last week.
Scott, is that, should it be posted if we're having discussions about these things?
Again, if it's gonna be on the agenda, yes, but the agenda can be amended if you wanted to add something for discussion purposes. It's not an action item, so there's nothing, it's not gonna move forward tonight, or this isn't the last opportunity for it to be discussed, but.
And it was added just around 5:30 before the meeting started tonight, so it is out on the website. It is, the packet is out there as well.
Yeah, if it's on the agenda, then it's.
It's not on the agenda for the regular meeting.
But it's on the agenda for the website, what they're saying, because just like when we do all the other meetings, and we ask if there's any adjustments to the agenda where you can do additions or deletions, that's what happened. So, again, to answer your question, yes, it should be posted.
But I have a six o'clock meeting, I don't go to my computer at 5:30 to see if there are changes.
I understand, so what would you like us to do right now? What is it that you'd like us to do?
I would like to suspend the discussion, because I didn't even bring my notes with me.
Okay, we can suspend the discussion. Okay, we're done. We can suspend the discussion, and then we'll make sure that it's on our meeting for, either we have a special meeting to regard this, because this has been kicked down the road for six months now. We can either have a special meeting, or we can have it at the next meeting, it's up to council, what you wanna do. Next on the agenda was whatever you all wanna talk about, so now I wanna talk about the ethics. I'm just kidding. Lighten up, people, geez, life's too short. Can you give me the meeting ID number for the Zoom? It won't, it's not that, it's not 99999.
That's my issue, too.
Okay, let me go.
Maybe we should talk about Zoom, since we always have so much problems with Zoom, and it's annoying.
Let's study session, so. Is that connecting ID up there, the 811? But isn't that the, no, isn't that the host one? Say, there's two different. It's like, it's my, it would be like, I'm the one that set up the Zoom, like, give me an example. I set up the Zoom, you wouldn't be able to come under me, you would have a different logic. There was two separate ones, though, if I'm not mistaken, for our Zoom. Isn't there? Because this one, that one.
I think there should be a public one.
There's a public one, and then there's a private one.
And then the one that the host operates.
Right. So, yeah, we do have to have a discussion about.
This is like, super unprofessional, getting out of hand.
I agree. So, we live it with the video. Let's see, this is just gonna be.
Recording in progress.
See, we're admitted to.
What is there, sir?
The meeting host will let you in.
And that's not it, if you go over to, are there anybody else? Participants, it's just you. So, in the participants, you're the host, okay.
You said, "Try without it?"
Yeah.
But you, can you, I don't know if you can hear on.
Yeah, you don't use the microphone, the computer.
You said you did? You heard me?
Yeah.
You heard me?
Heard you. What was that?
I just wanna make sure you heard me on camera.
Um, yeah, he said he can hear you.
Okay.
There you go.
Yeah, oh, me, cash.
So, what would you all like to talk about? We have review of the regular agenda items, so this might be a good time to also, if you have any questions about the meeting notes, or minutes, I mean, budget, questions. Otherwise, we sit here for an hour. Okay, so hearing none, then we'll move on to mayor and council comments. So, my comment is, this is not great. So, I think that when we have, I think that the Zoom audio and things like that, we do need to come up with a plan of what we're gonna do regarding the Zoom for study session. Either we're gonna keep it, we're always gonna have it for the third Monday, and nothing for the first Monday? That's a question for everybody.
We're waiting on costs, right?
Hmm? I think that's a, oh, I think so. The cost right now is $3,333 a month, so.
Which includes what?
3,000, what was it? $3,333 a month. That includes rendering fees of the Zoom meetings. Let's see, I have that packet downstairs. So, it includes taking the Zoom recording that is sent to Jim. He then goes in and takes off the excess, just white noise or conversations before the meetings actually start, and he clips that so that that's not there. And then after the meeting is adjourned, he clips that, so that portion is not there. He goes in and puts in timestamps so that you can go to each section of the agenda, the items that are on there, and adds that on the recording. There's a portion of it that, well, he adds music at the beginning of it, and a title, and then he renders it through a rendering process. There's a software platform that he uses to do that, and it takes him five to seven hours, he says, to go through each meeting, depending on the length of it and what else in there, to do that, to get it ready to upload it to YouTube, so that it's there. And that includes, while he's here, he charges $30 an hour for his services and $26 an hour for his camera operator's services.
But will we get an actual hard copy of the proposal with all of this data in it?
I have a copy downstairs. I didn't know that we would be talking about that right now, so I can go and get it. It's just a breakdown of the prices. I can email that to you so that you have that for discussion at the next meeting to come back, but.
So, it looks, I mean, to me, it's, we're, okay, yeah, that's fine.
I do have a question. So, is there a possibility we could possibly find, like, a professional with Zoom? Does Jim possibly know anyone who's professional?
You just said he wasn't professional.
No, I'm saying, no one actually, no one's actually manning Zoom.
You can mute yourself. You're able to mute other people. Can you mute yourself, please? Whoever's on Zoom, be cop, can you mute yourself? Bruce Kofus, can you mute yourself? Okay, I can't. You should be, I was just saying, you should be able to go to his name right in the corner, and then click on that, and you can.
This has been two years, I guess.
So, I have done Zoom meetings in the past. I would run them myself from my computer. Running Zoom is not hard, it's just making sure that you have the program that you're logged into, and can set that up. And, okay, he's muted now.
Okay, thank you.
I will make sure going forward that we have that taken care of, that there's more than one person that has access to it, to make sure that we're all set going forward. Hopefully, he unmuted himself.
But like, this is what I mean, someone needs to be manning the computer.
But it can be set up that the public is muted, they cannot, and that's a question that you as council will have to determine, whether or not you want to allow public participation through Zoom, or if you just want to allow them to watch the meetings. The community is that I am aware of, do not allow public participation through Zoom. They have to either come to the meetings or submit something in writing that they would like enter into the minutes. So, then you don't have these issues where you're having to continually mute somebody so that they cannot.
But there is on Zoom, you should be able to automatically.
Set it up where the public is muted.
Where it's immediately muted.
Yep.
But then someone can be on the computer manning it when we say, "Okay, public comment." Then you go in order, when you tell people to raise their hand, they can unmute that person, and then back. I mean, I'm not, I don't wanna, I don't wanna seem like I'm being difficult, but, I mean, at this point, it just seems like super unprofessional, and it's embarrassing at this point, so.
It is embarrassing, absolutely.
But I think we just need to figure that out. Add that into our monthly fee, yes.
And a couple of meetings ago, I thought Jim said he had several different options and suggestions of what we could do that would be.
I have not received those.
Okay, okay.
We talked about an à la carte.
Yes, I have received that.
Okay.
Okay. I apologize, I didn't bring my laptop up because it's the discussion session, and I was gonna go get it between this one and the next meeting, but I definitely have that, and I am not opposed to muting or unmuting people, or if council wants to continue allowing participation through Zoom from the public of addressing or letting people speak that have their hands raised on that format. That's just something that council would need to determine how they want to move forward on that.
And I think it's also important to find out, so, you know, as Kelly mentioned, when we first started talking about this, you know, in the, when we approved the budget, you know, we did say, "No, no study session." So, if we are going to record the study session that is part of the regular council meetings, or the third one of the month, then I'd like to see what the additional cost is for adding the study session to that council meeting recording. Like, I don't imagine it's all that much, because like you said, most of the cost is in the setup, but there's hourly time for the camera people, Jim's time, and so forth, so I wanna know what that incremental, what that delta is, because that'll help us to figure out the, you know, the overall, what this is gonna cost us overall.
Okay, I believe that you're just paying for Jim for the setup portion of that, and then the camera operators come in just prior to the meeting starting, so you're not paying. It takes him an hour and a half generally to pull out all of the equipment and get it set up, because we do store it away so that it doesn't walk out of the building, so.
Right, but the camera person would be here for the hour and a half during the study session, so there's a cost for that.
Right, correct.
So, that's what we need to know, is the total delta between including the study session and not including the study session on the third Monday of each month.
And then can we also have, if it's not being Zoomed, is it on Facebook Live? Is it on, you know, where, what's happening? Are we just in person? People can come and hear and listen and whatever in person, or are there other options? Because nobody knows.
And then, normally, it is the public comments before the mayor and council comments, because then the mayor and council comments can be.
Can address that?
Yep.
Okay.
Should I switch that now?
So, if we could switch that now, that way we can have public comment first. So if there's anyone that's on Zoom.
Bruce.
Or the two people that is in the audience, if you would like to speak, if you're on Zoom, raise your hand, and if you are in public, then just come to the microphone. And it does not say on here that you have three minutes to speak, but that is what the going, the going consensus is, about three minutes. And then also, this is, public comment is not for a discussion between council and the general public, it's to give your comments or feedbacks, feedback, and pretty much that's all. So if anybody has anything that they would like to say. Anyone? All right? Anyone? Third time. Okay. So, then I will toss it back, I think we did this before, I feel like roundhouse day, mayor and council comment, is there anything that someone would like to?
Yeah, I'll talk about a couple things. One thing that we've touched upon in the last six months a few times, and I know there's been some emails going back and forth, is developing an encroachment policy. So we've got a lot of situations that keep arising that are due to encroachments, so for example, people who are using public right-of-ways as their driveway and wanting to maintain, when we were looking into the snow clearing, the snow shoveling, the pathways to the school, we learned that there were a lot of residents parallel to the school fence line that have, you know, physical structures in the public right-of-way with no encroachment. We have issues with parking pads in the encroachment. It's a conversation that needs to take place among the administration to recommend a policy for encroachments, and I know I've sent emails many times over the last six months, but I'd really like to see some action take place on that, because again, a lot of the, a lot of the emails that I'm getting from residents with issues and problems have to do with, you know, essentially have to do with some of these encroachment issues. So it really needs to be something that gets solved sooner rather than later, in my opinion The other thing I was just gonna mention, I think a couple months ago, we talked about getting a phone in here with the speaker, so that in those instances where we need it, we can have it, and I still don't see it in here, so.
I think there needs to be. I was gonna say, I think overall, phones would be most important first. We were considering having phones up here, and so I think that would be precedence, and that was, I'd like to bring that up.
If we had a long enough garden, we'd probably bring one from the conference room.
Seriously.
When we need it, that's what we would do.
Just run it down the hallway.
Yeah. Well, you can bring it through the walls.
Yeah, it would make sense to just have one in the room.
It's getting worse, maybe if I'm really. So, yeah, that's another thing that I did wanna bring up, was a situation with the phones. Is there a, what's the resolution? What's the action plan for next time if that happens?
Hopefully, we will not ever have a next time if that happens, but I don't know if we have any legal recourse against them, because they discontinued our phone lines completely, including our police department, without ensuring that we had been ported over to another company. And while I have not worked for a phone company, my husband worked for AT&amp;T for 22 some odd years before going to the state to work. And, uh, his comment was that they're bound, that they should have made sure that we were ported to another, um, firm before they, uh, disconnected our phone lines. So especially because it is our, um, police department, um, you know, that was disconnected and people were not able to get through. They're still having issues, um, in the police department with direct lines that we do not have. So, um, that is something that, uh, we need to make sure, whatever phone carrier that we have, that they have our correct email addresses and that, um, we stay in touch with them, I guess, to make sure that we do not get disconnected. This totally blindsided all of us. And I, I'm, I'm just as much at a loss as you are. We're fighting to get our lines back. They said that we, they could port our lines, but it's gonna take us two to three months to get everything back. No, not two to three months? Nope, okay, I'm gonna let PM talk, cause I'm, I don't want to give the wrong information there.
So just while you're getting together, so you're saying that we actually lost phone numbers?
No, um, we have all of our phone numbers. We have thirty-six lines. When we first got with the company, they could only, you know, port five of our lines over. So the other thirty-one lines will be coming over, but they said it could take up to two weeks.
Oh, two weeks, sorry.
So, um, right now, as of today, I got an email, I sent the email back saying our phones are still not ported over. They have to take them and they're going through voice, so they have to give them another number to get our number and we're waiting for the other company to release them.
So this is regular phone lines or is it voice over IP?
Uh, it's gonna be voice over IP after we get an adjournment.
So, um, and what company are, we're, we're porting from what company to what company?
I'm not sure of the new company's name.
From Windstream.
Windstream.
We are from Windstream, but the new company, I'm not sure of their nae. BSB's been helping us. They're the ones that we get our phones from and they have been wonderful to be helping. And, I mean, I was on the phone for two and a half hours with one of their reps and talking to Windstream. It's been very hard with Windstream because they, I think they're in India or something because they're not in the United States. I'll tell you whoever I'm talking to. Because it's been very hard to understand them, they're not understanding us. They wouldn't let me even do anything because I was not on the contract or I'm not on their approved list. And everybody that's on the approved list, they won't even tell me who it is, but nobody's here anymore. So I don't know who's on the approved list and they wouldn't put me on it. They told me they couldn't do it. So we've been fighting with Windstream a lot, but we are working on it. We're trying to get our phones back up. The last email I had, she, um, sent all the phone numbers over to me. And, um, when, uh, the police chief told me that their direct lines are not working yet, I called my direct line, that's not working yet either, and those are the ones that have not been ported yet. So the main number, the police main number, the city fax number and the police fax number, I know for sure are three of, or four of them. I'm not sure what the fifth one was that was ported over, so.
Someone, someone calls those phone numbers, what, what's the record?
They get a busy signal.
No, that's what I was gonna ask.
Well, if, yeah, if it's down, if, they, we had to give two cellphone numbers. So, um, for, if our phones are to go down again, so that calls can come through, I gave the city managers, I gave the police chiefs, because they have city phones, so.
So are we shopping around for any other, um, other company?
We haven't, this is this time because we're trying to get our phones back first.
But, but it is something we have intention to do. We had to go with somebody right now because we had to have phone lines set up for us. We didn't have an option to shop, like normally you would get quotes or, or that kind of stuff. I would recommend that we go with, uh, a company that is well-established and well-known. I've never heard of Windstream, not saying that they're not, not good or anything, but, uh, given this, uh, incident, um, it, it has left a strong distaste in my mouth, so.
So, I mean, I'm familiar with, with, uh, Windstream, but I, I recall asking this, and now I'm not saying towards you, but I'm saying, I know that we talked about getting quotes from other phone vendors before and it just never happened. So that's why, um, I'm asking for us to-
The company we have right now is a month-to-month, so we can go out and look for other companies and that, so.
It's not so much the contract, it's more of the reliability that I think we need to be really focused on at this point. So I just would hope that we have something in place that is, um, some type of backup plan for if this ever happened again.
You can go around.
All right, so, um, any other questions about, uh, phone lines?
Phone bills are paid, uh, in advance. I see that we paid in July, probably for August to Windstream. Will we get any of that back?
Well, we just paid another bill to, today for them, which is, um, the bill came out August fourth. I got on the phone with Windstream today. We will get a refund back on that phone, but we had to pay it. So because there is a portion of it, by looking at the bill, there is a portion that is from back and the rest is for forward, so we'll get our money back. Cause I was on the phone with them today before I even paid the bill.
Okay. And then it's gonna be prorated going forward because it's not been back up since, was that July?
No, it was August, August fourth is when they cut the phones.
I was on vacation for two weeks.
Discommissioned, they said, her phone lines.
Okay. Thank you. So just because we are, um, so out of sorts and we have absolutely nothing to discuss for the next forty-five minutes, um, I'm gonna open a backup for public comment if anybody wants, uh, public comment now. Otherwise, we can adjourn, unless there's a, you have anything?
Um, I do have a quick question.
Okay.
Were you able to get Mr. Rudd? Were you able to get Mr. Rudd to come to the meeting tonight?
He will be here for the regular meeting and I do have, um, the, um, contract printed downstairs that I'll bring up for the next meeting that you all will get a copy of.
Okay, thank you.
Or the, the purchase offer, I shouldn't say contract, but the purchase offer.
That's all I have.
Go ahead. Uh, I, I'll say it now and I'll say it at the next meeting. I just wanted to address the Southfield Public Schools millage. They are going to go for a millage. I had been in contact with board members. I, uh, had conversations with two board members on July sixteenth and they said they were still developing their plan, they did not have details. I saw the board president here, uh, at the election polls and she told me that she would get back with me, she would be in touch. So, um, I, there wasn't any information to share with the community about the millage. So, uh, that's been all over Facebook and just wanted to clear, clear that up. I got my information from reading it in the Southfield Sun. So they're closing McIntyre, our beloved school, so perhaps they didn't want to share that information, you know, with me, but, uh, I'm not sure. So I did not have information, I did pursue it and I did have conversations, so.
Can I ask, what did they, um, say about McIntyre? Like, uh, McIntyre, was that at the meeting?
No, it's, I read it in the newspaper.
Yeah, it's been in-
So none of us knew anything about this until we read it in the paper?
They say they're gonna be repurposing it for community.
I don't think they could really say anything publicly, but they want to make it recreation.
They couldn't say anything publicly?
I don't know.
I'm just saying that, I mean, our residents pay, um, taxes to the school and I'm just saying that-
But if you go to, if you go to their meetings, they'll tell you the same thing. They don't, you know, speak about the millage or anything until they're at the meeting.
When it comes to about, uh, you know, a s, actual city, that the, uh, elected officials, the administration should not find out what's going on through the newspaper. That's all, I'm just-
Oh, yes, I mean-
And then have our input solicited after the fact.
Maybe I'm wrong, but that's, that's kind of how we do things, but anyway. So I did want to get that out there publicly and, um, there are a couple of meetings scheduled, a couple of virtual meetings, one was already held last week, I saw that. I, I got a notice about that that day, so, um, I believe there's one tomorrow as virtual. And then I think the following Tuesday is, is in person at Southfield, um, A&amp;T and then another virtual one, so, where they will be laying out, uh, all of the plans.
I didn't mean to cut you off. But no, I was saying, don't they do them every Tuesday? I saw on the, uh, it was a flyer, they said it's like a, a weekly thing.
Yeah, I think there were four, four of them, two in person, two virtual.
Yeah, the one tomorrow is at five o'clock.
Well, I call for an adjournment.
Anything else?
No. Motion to adjourn. I know.
Okay, so, um, the actual, uh, the actual meeting will start at seven o'clock. Seven, seven thirty and, um, again, I apologize for all the technical difficulties that we have going on. Thank you.